All right. It's time to roll. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order for the City Council's study session for Monday, April 1st, 2019. Our first order of business is an executive session. This is RCW 42.30.110-1G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. We expect it to be an hour, and if we need to extend, we'll be back out to do so.
No action expected.
Nope. It's a study session. Can't take action. Okay. So our next order of business is a presentation on the Transportation Master Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to call on Ms. Paston to introduce who we have this evening to talk with you about the TMP.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, interim City Manager Cheryl Paston, Acting Public Works Director. I have Kendra Breland, who you're well acquainted with, and I have a new face, Doug McIntyre. As you may have known, he left us to go to Bellevue, and I was able to entice him back. So he will actually be the project manager for the TMP for transit planning. He'll provide a lot of support all about transportation and planning. So I'm very happy to have him here. He will take over the presentation again tonight with Kendra. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, Mayor Mao Chow and members of the council. Again, my name is Doug McIntyre. I'm a transportation planner with the City of Sammamish, representing the Department of Public Works. As Cheryl mentioned, to my right is Kendra, and we will tag team this presentation tonight. So we have a quick progression of the topics we want to cover tonight. First, we'll give you sort of a brief, high-level overview of the status of the TMP, where we've been, where we're going, and then focus in on the community outreach approach, which we know will be a very robust approach moving forward, as well as what the city has already accomplished. Kendra will take on the multimodal levels of service conversation that will focus briefly on the auto levels of service, and then get into more details on PED, bike, and transit. She will also finish up with a quick overview of the process for developing the prioritized projects, transportation-related capital projects, and then we'll finish with next steps and hopefully get some really good feedback from council. So that was the progression, and really the purpose, again, is to get some good pointed direction on the outreach plan over the next short term here, roughly four to six months, and then, again, the multimodal levels of service. So as for the project status, as many of you will recall, the project was kicked off in spring of 2017, and then a lot of the public outreach was done in the summer of that year. And the outreach was really, the purpose of that was to establish the baseline foundation for the TMP, establish the priorities, which council then adopted, and we have a slide and two slides here giving an overview of that as well. Leading into the fall and winter of 2018, fall of 2017 and winter of 2018, there was some focus, pretty directly focused on auto concurrency and levels of service, specifically with relation to intersections. And then, later that winter, council did adopt intersection level of service and concurrency, as well as the comp plan amendments. Council then directed staff to work on roadway segments and corridors, which we are sort of in the thick of right now, and will come before council on May 21st for a public hearing. And then, once council adopts that, we will be done with that portion and really put all effort into the TMP and restarting it, which is, again, why we're here tonight. So as you'll recall, there's some kind of three pillars of the TMP. There's the pillar for completing connections for all modes, which really is about safe and efficient movement, better mobility, and reconsidering how we define transportation success. There's the other pillar of really getting that community support for what we're doing. We want to have a really in-depth community conversation, get some really good support behind the TMP, and understand what the community envisions for its transportation network. And then, of course, there's the realistic part. We want it to be fundable and implementable, and really be something that emphasizes the fiscal realism in prioritizing our projects. So this was a result of the community outreach. I alluded to this slide a couple of seconds ago. Based on the outreach done in the summer of 2017, council did adopt the transportation priorities, and there are six of them in front of us: efficient use of the transportation system, easier access to regional destinations on roadways, more multimodal options to get around town, financially sustainable management of the transportation system, a safe and welcoming transportation network, and really enhancing the unique character of Sammamish. So in looking forward to how we're going to conduct our community outreach, again, we wanted it to be robust. We know that the council really wants to know what the community visions for the TMP, and so we're trying to build a really comprehensive approach to how we do outreach. We want to rely on sort of the traditional workshops, the in-person meetings, but we also want to round it out by having a way for people to provide input online. So whether that's through web mapping or kind of the two-way conversation that we can have online in forums, as well as looking into surveys. We want to make sure that we address some of the key topics with the community, so that would include things like the network for walking and biking, transit opportunities, connectivity, safe routes to school, among several other topics. All of this input will really help us inform the prioritized project list that comes out of the TMP or is included in the TMP, as well as program and policy updates, and ultimately result in the draft TMP. One thing I did want to highlight in our community outreach approach is that we really want to have some unique ways to get involved, in addition to some of the more traditional ways. So we're looking into building what we call a meeting in a box, which is sort of a great way to reduce the staff time and effort in running a lot of these in-person meetings and sort of empower the community to either run their own. We can target HOAs, faith groups, community groups, school groups, to basically pick up a box that's predefined. It's got all the materials you need to run a meeting in your community, take it to your community meeting, run it, provide the input that you gather at that meeting back to city staff, and we can record it at that point. That really reduces some of the level of effort for us. We're also trying to implement within that idea, a meeting in a box for staff, so that when we go to various community meetings and other in-person meetings, we can sort of rely on a group approach, where we have a relatively fresh meeting in a box to run on a short notice with any community group. So it's kind of a cool tool for us that we really want to use in this process. We're also looking into doing a statistically valid survey for some of these priorities as well. So I think that could really give us a well-rounded understanding and approach to our TMP work.
Okay. Switching topics. Good evening, council. Kendra Breland, Farron Pierce. It's been a while. So topic that I'm going to dive into tonight is multimodal level of service. And so as a reminder, multimodal level of service is evaluating conditions and defining needs for all modes of travel. So it incorporates driving, which, of course, we've talked about at great length, but also walking, biking, and transit. So it really kind of considers a level of accommodation for all of these modes based on built environment variables. So just refresher, a slide that should look very familiar. Over the past, kind of over a year, we've been working together to develop level of service thresholds for intersections and roadway segments and corridors. All of these kind of standards should look fairly familiar, and we've talked about them at length. So tonight, our conversation is going to focus mostly on the other modes of travel, but of course, we're happy to talk about any of these topics as interests, council. So kind of moving on to kind of those other key modes. So first, walking. When we think about Sammamish's transportation system that it provides for folks walking today, tend to think about trails that we have. The map here shows kind of all the trails that are shown in your 2018 pro-plan, as well as the sidewalks that are in the system today. But when we think about really, you know, kind of what kind of pedestrian environment are we providing, and as we craft level of service guidelines for considering the pedestrian environment, there's a number of considerations we should put in place. First of all, whether or not a pedestrian facility is provided. We're really careful here in referencing a pedestrian facility, rather than saying that that has to be a sidewalk, for example. Depending on kind of the urban, the environment, that could be provided through a trail, through an enhanced shoulder, as well as through your standard curb gutter and sidewalk. Another consideration is whether or not a pedestrian facility is provided on one side of the street or two sides of the street. That, of course, is going to vary in terms of needs based on kind of the street type. Other considerations on the pedestrian environment that are very, very important is not just how you travel along a street, but how do you cross a street, and what is the frequency of those crossings? So just showing here some of the considerations. We might look at spacing. And then, last but not least, of that crossing treatment, what is provided? Is it a standard striped crosswalk? Are we talking about something that's enhanced with illumination or high visibility? Those are all of the kind of ingredients that we'll be looking into to consider kind of the pedestrian environment. So we wanted to give council an example of how we might think about how kind of this level of thinking might inform the development of our draft project list for the TMP. So first of all, looking at streets throughout Sammamish, we'd work with you and the community to identify what is kind of that prioritized pedestrian network. So what are those streets that are potentially the most important to provide pedestrian facilities on? We certainly think that your major arterials and potentially your collectors are going to be important to include, as well as those streets that are important for accessing gathering places, schools, key gateways to neighborhoods. And so if you look at this example here, we've highlighted Iskwa Pine Lake Road as a key component of your pedestrian priority network. I don't think anybody would dispute that providing pedestrian facilities and the ability to walk on the street is really critical within the community. But as you look at the street, if you look very closely on that image there, you'll see that as you get closer to 228th, right over by Pine Lake Middle School, you'll see that there's sidewalks on both sides of the street. But as you head further south on that corridor, of course, no pedestrian facilities exist, and you can kind of see that in the yellow components of that map. So we might use that to identify where are there gaps in that pedestrian network, and that will help us to inform where there is the need for potential projects to be considered as a part of the TMP. I'm going to move on to our next mode of travel, bicycle facilities. So again, this map here kind of shows what you've got as your bicycle network in the city today. So highlighting where you've got bicycle lanes, where you have major shared-use paths like the Eastlake-Sammamish Trail. But again, as we're thinking about the priority network, the system that we have today, of course, is probably not connecting all of those destinations that we'd want to connect to. So we'd be looking at where are those gathering places and schools that we need to connect to? What have you already been thinking about as a community in terms of potential facilities and connections? And then also thinking about, well, are these facilities appropriate for the users that we're trying to accommodate? Certainly, as you think about a cyclist, there's a very different list of needs for a family that might be riding a bike in terms of the level of protection and separation from vehicle traffic that they might require compared to a more experienced kind of commute cyclist. And so wanted to talk about a methodology that's been used in a number of communities. It's being used in the city of Bellevue to think about bicycle level of service, and that's called level of traffic stress. So to provide an example, and this image here does come from the city of Bellevue's guidance. Essentially, when we're thinking about bicycle streets and the type of environment that they're providing for bicyclists, to navigate you to this image here, there's a variety of characteristics we take into consideration. First of all, the speed of the roadway. Certainly, faster-moving roadways are less inviting, and slower-moving roadways are more inviting to cyclists. The volume of the roadway, how many vehicles it carries per day, certainly has some bearing on how welcoming and inviting that facility is. So taking those considerations into place, and then thinking about the cyclist type that we're trying to accommodate, and you can see in those colors, from level of traffic stress 1 cyclist groups, those are kind of your families with kids, all the way along that spectrum to your more experienced cyclists, it really does determine the type of treatment that you want to provide. So I wanted to drill down on an example with a 30 mile an hour street. This Southeast 8th, just outside of City Hall here, is 30 mile an hour arterial street. So in thinking about what is it that we need to provide, we can certainly think about, you know, what do we need to provide a striped bike lane if we're just trying to accommodate level of traffic stress level 3? Or if we're really trying to accommodate families with cyclists, we actually would provide a physically separated bikeway. Just for your example, for your information, I'm going to toggle back a little bit here. That roadway actually carries about 10,000 daily vehicles. It has a striped bike lane. It actually accommodates level of traffic stress 2, so it's a pretty welcoming facility. And so really, the question is that we'd be asking the community, is that welcoming enough? If it is, then we'd probably be very happy with what we have on that roadway. If we want to provide a higher level of comfort to more inexperienced cyclists or folks with young children, then we might want to think about a higher level treatment.
I thought part of the sidewalks being so wide on 228th was to handle those bike riders that were not comfortable on the road. And so don't we kind of have that covered there?
Yes. I actually, we've spoke with staff, actually, as we look at the existing cycling facilities today, we've recognized that, because that definitely, I would concur with you, that's an important kind of amenity. And to the extent we're thinking about that as a fully separated bicycle facility, I think the city has done a tremendous job at accommodating cyclists on, you know, such a challenging street as 228th.
I just want to make one quick comment there, because as a pedestrian and as a cyclist, I hate cyclists on the sidewalk. So you don't have a chart here that shows the level of stress that pedestrians have when you have bicyclists on the sidewalk, and that's an important element on 228th to consider.
That is a very important one. That's one we haven't gotten to. We were talking about individual modes today, but kind of the next step to that is talking about those layered networks, those modal networks, and how they intersect. And then, as a community, talking about, well, what are the priorities on individual streets? So, you know, having an answer of, is it more important to accommodate cyclists or pedestrians? If we find that pedestrians are really our priority there, we might want to look at other interventions for accommodating cyclists in that, what we'd call north-south travel So I'm going to continue to kind of, the final mode that we're going to talk about today, transit network. You can see here, your transit network in this community is pretty simple today. So you can see it's concentrated along 228th, and we've kind of shown, if you squinted at that map very closely, the transit stops, the South Sammamish Park and Ride, metro routes, sound transit routes that run through the city. And really, as we think about transit priority networks and what we can do as a community to accommodate transit, really kind of falls in kind of three areas. The city has control over pedestrian access to kind of transit routes, and making sure that transit stops are accessible for folks on sidewalks, that there's accessible crossings. That, of course, has some intersections with both your bicycle and your pedestrian level of service. Your route, along the route, just thinking about treatments like transit signal priority, is that something that you want to provide to improve transit headways? And then, last but not least, at the stops themselves. While King County Metro certainly has its standards for what it provides at stops, that's not something that stops community. If you desire to provide a higher level of weather protection, or seating, or more of a landing zone, or better wavefinding, that's something that, of course, the city can do as a host to transit. And last but not least, all of these ingredients alongside what our transit service providers are doing is kind of what creates that transit level of service or experience for transit users in the city.
I've got a couple of questions up here.
Sure.
But first, I do want to ask for clarification on the weather protection. My understanding was we weren't allowed to do anything to King County Metro stops, including adding shelter. Cheryl, do you know?
So they said if the city's willing to pay for it, they're more than happy to work with us to install those.
Okay. That's good to know.
Hold on. I'm just going to clarify a question on that. So if the city is willing to pay for it, do they, we still have to run it by them? Or is it under our dime and our control?
They do have their standards for what a bus stop, a shelter, looks like, so we would be coordinating with them.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
I'm back. On this slide, you have long-range plans on the transit service provider, but it goes throughout. Is all of this, when we talk about long-range plans for the TMPs, are going to be for 2035? Is that the year that this is all being built out, or till when?
That's the horizon year for the TMP. But again, if there are things in the horizon that are beyond that, or things that are shorter term, I mean, that's where prioritization and phasing comes into mind.
And then, if we are going 2035, then it's going to be based upon the comp plan and the city as currently envisioned with the 4,600 additional housing units that are planned in town center as part of that?
The TMP needs to kind of work hand in glove with the land use vision for the city. So whichever land use vision that we're recognizing in our comprehensive plan, those are the forecasts that will be used for, or those are the basis, the land use basis that we'll use for the forecast for the TMP.
Okay.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. A couple of questions that I don't see addressed in transit level of service that feel like they're pretty important in terms of usage, which is, where do we measure the ability to access? You talk about like sidewalks, but in terms of realistically able to access it. It's two miles from my house, so how do I get there? And the other one is frequency of service, because I feel like those are two key elements in terms of people being able to use transit as a viable alternative to driving, at least for things like commuting and regular occurrences. So where do those get factored in?
That's a good, that's very good questions. We've worked with a number of communities to develop kind of standalone transit master plans, and that's where you can really get deep into some of those questions. So I think, you know, you're asking some very good ones. First of all, ability to access and looking at the walksheds and looking about, well, how do we expand that envelope? Some of that will be answered through the TMP using GIS-type exercises, network, you know, I definitely say, in considering kind of the accessibility of the transit network. There's just a lot of things we could consider. How ADA compliant are your facilities? What is the slope? That's a big one, and topography is a big one in Sammamish. And then, just the comfort of those facilities and if there are gaps. So those are things that we can look at fairly mechanically. With respect to frequency of service, I worked with the city of Kirkland on this for their 2015 Transportation Master Plan update, and they followed it up by doing a full-on transit plan. Something we identified in Kirkland was that, you know, there were only certain areas in the city that were really ripe for fixed route, regular, high-frequency transit. Many other parts of the city, for example, their newly annexed areas, just they didn't have terribly connected roadway systems. A lot of them do feel very much like Sammamish in terms of the neighborhoods, very desirable, great places to live, but from the perspective of providing a high-frequency, regular transit service, didn't lend themselves so well. So Kirkland is actually looking at, thinking about, how can we provide a flexible transit service that looks at those kind of first-last-mile connections, potentially partnering with some of our newer emerging technologies? I mean, things in the near term that are being looked at by another, a number of communities or ride-hailing services? Can we partner with Lyft or Uber, or Chariot was a recent one, to provide that kind of connection to transit? Moving into the future, though, there's emerging modes. I took this morning, my car is in the shop, figured that out very early this morning, and I took a Lime bike. That was great to have an e-bike that was able to carry me up my hill to where I needed to go very early in the morning. But, you know, in the future, roving autonomous vehicles, I could see that as a future. When we're looking out to 2035, 2040, I think that's a reasonable kind of consideration to have. So I think you're asking incredible questions. The TMP will get into some of that, but if you want to get very, very deep into some of those discussions, I think that's where a standalone transit master plan has a place. Well, I'm going to take my last slide here, and then I'm going to hand it back to Doug. So I just wanted to talk about this kind of overall process and how all of this plays together. So first of all, in terms of developing a prioritized project list, because I think that's where we all care about the TMP. I mean, yes, priorities are great. I know you, on the council, you guys spend a lot of time thinking about this, and that's great, but most of the community members really care about, well, when does a project that I'm going to use on a daily basis get built? So that's really where we're trying to drive with this TMP process. So just to kind of give you a quick overview of the process, the first kind of phase that we're excited about moving into is kind of identifying kind of the source of just that universe of projects that are available. The city, of course, has done a lot of planning over the years, so we're going to be compiling kind of all of those projects that have been contemplated over the years. Connectivity projects. Connectivity, of course, is a big discussion in the city. There are a number of barricades in this community. There are a number of street connections. So thinking about all of those that have been mapped over time, which of those are viable, which of those aren't viable, and really kind of getting our arms around kind of that universe of potential projects. And then, last but not least, I talked about MML OS, talked about, you know, kind of using that as a framework to say, what are our priority networks? What are the gaps in our priority networks? So identifying those gaps, and kind of when you compile all of those potential investments, that gives us a huge kind of potential universe of projects. Of course, the city, even Sammamish being a very affluent community, can't afford all of that. So our next step would be to really evaluate those projects with the community to see which of these projects, these types of investments, really advance our priorities. Doug talked about the priorities that were identified by the community, and then kind of given a head nod by council back in 2017. So we'd really be interested in understanding, you know, kind of which of all of these investments, which of those get us the farthest in advancing those priorities, and really kind of understanding which are the best, which are maybe not as good, so that you can invest your money wisely. And then, moving into understanding, what are your funding sources? What are your constraints, such that we can really develop that appropriately-sized prioritized project list, which, of course, then will feed into your impact fee project list? So that's, in a nutshell, what this process boils down to. Our passion is really about getting projects built that improve communities and that communities are really excited about. So this is a process that we've seen work very well in a number of communities to really kind of arrive at that prioritized project list that folks feel are kind of really advancing kind of where they want their community to go. So with that, I think unless you have any questions, I'll pass it on to Doug.
Yeah, and just real quick, before we get feedback from council, wanted to go over some high-level next steps. So we have kind of three categories up here. We have upcoming council presentations. Of course, these are not all of them, but there are some of the important ones to highlight in the near term. We have a May 2019 date to discuss modeling findings in transit. In July, we'll come back and talk about our public outreach approach, sort of where we've been and where we're going again. And then, as far as outreach and technical work, between April, between now and July, we will start to identify and evaluate a draft proposed projects list. We'll start doing some of the outreach on the TMP and some of the draft projects. We will, of course, review public input between November of this year and February of next year, and start refining the project list and developing the draft TMP document, which is really exciting. We'll conclude all of this with the adoption of the TMP. It says no later than December 2020 on here. That's because it gets, it will be a comp plan amendment that gets wrapped into the comp plan amendment process, which, as you all are aware, is done comprehensively at the end of the year. So we'll be doing a lot of that work earlier in 2020, but it will be formalized at the end of the year.
Can I ask a question on this? So as we go into that, identify and evaluate the draft proposed projects, will there be dollars associated with them at that point?
And yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. I think the reason I'm asking is the next step there, which is the public outreach on the draft projects. Personally, I would really like to make sure that the public is aware of the dollar figures associated with them, and then potential funding sources for those, because I think that will give you a much truer look at what our community desires to have. If they understand it means a tax increase for them, they may not be as, it may not be as desirable of a project if they feel like there's no impact to them. So I think we need to be completely transparent with our community as to what these are going to be. So I think we need to be completely transparent with our community as to what these are going to cost and what that revenue source is going to look like.
Absolutely.
I think that's a really good point. When I was working for the city of Kirkland a number of years ago, again, something that we actually shared with the community, and it's not to say this is what the exact, you know, test we'd show, but staff wanted to give the community a sense of if they were to increase their level of service standard from, they had, I think, E or D, and they wanted to go up one, what would that cost? And we did a quick analysis, and it was $500 million at least around the community in terms of additional facilities that would need to be provided. So I think just giving the public an understanding of how much that's going to be, and that was also paired with, and by the way, this is how much Kirkland generates per year. So this is everything we're going to have for the next 50 years.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure too, as we, you know, whatever these proposed projects may or may not be, and some of them are going to be multimodal, and some of them will be a combination of, we want to, we desire a road connection here, and with it comes the bike lane and the sidewalk. But I want to make sure too that we're incorporating in the costs. And I realize that, looking, you know, to the future on what land acquisition costs may be, but there is going to be a very significant, if we're talking about connections, there are going to be some very significant costs that the city will have to be burdened with in order to acquire private property. And I think that should be a piece of the puzzle too.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I have the one on top of that about the public outreach approach of July 2019. We had talked earlier in the 2017, you had done an outreach effort and that, and so I assume we're not starting from scratch, but you're going to be able to build on that. And just so we can go at a quicker clip on that.
Absolutely. And as, as the needs of the project change, we want to be communicating constantly and continuously with the community about what's going on in current, current status.
We're good on questions up here at the moment. I don't have any more lights on. I think your next slide says feedback, so I don't know if there's additional feedback that council wants to provide.
The next one says thank you.
Now they have, now all the lights are on. No, I'm kidding. Okay, I think we're good. I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next discussion item is city council goals for 2019, 2020.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is your second touch with the council goals. You have in your packet this evening, you have three documents. You have a comparison of your 2018 priorities and the draft goals. You have the goals that were given to you at the last meeting, and I've integrated some of your thoughts into those. There's some others that are indicated that still need to be worked on as a piece of that. And you also have a copy of some red lines, goals that Council Hornish has put forward. What I wanted to do this evening is just talk to you about the goals, and we'll leave the objectives and tasks for the next touch that you have, which will be on the ninth, and have you look at that document that has the council priorities that you developed in 2018, and then looking at the draft goals that have been presented along with those that Council Hornish has provided for you this evening. And I guess the question is, well, first of all, let me indicate that communication engagement, I wrapped that in to goal five, which was maintain high performing government services. Did add goal seven, if you wish to have one of those, and added goal number three, which pulls out of high performing government, the safety aspects. So the real question, before you even talk about how you accomplish goals, what are the goals that you're looking to accomplish? Do those capture it? Is it more along as the red lines indicate, or is there something else that you want to see in there, or some of these that you do not want to see?
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just as a quick question. So I think you're asking us to look at, there's a singular page where you have the 2018 priorities and then the 2019, 2020.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Right, so now what page are we on?
In the packet.
Page 13 of 23 in the packet.
13 of 23.
Okay.
So it looks like this.
All right. Let me find that one.
You're on Hornish's goals.
You can look at.
You're on Hornish's goals.
You can punch on exhibit three if you just go to your agenda, Adam.
Yeah. There we go.
There we go, I see, yes.
And again, you will, you'll want to look at those that Council Hornish has provided as well, because that would be another approach.
I like the simplified, I like the simplified approach, certainly.
With the seven goals?
The, well, so if you look at, it's page five of 23. It lists the goal and then objectives and tasks under each of them. And I think Councilmember Hornish pointed out last time, you know, narrowing the scope just, just the goal is a much simplified way of, of doing this. Otherwise, we could be here for a couple of weeks trying to hash through all these objectives and tasks, but, uh, let's see. Councilmember Hornish.
Yeah, I thought I'd speak to my red line as to the rationale and thought. I had mentioned before that the acronym SMART, when you're setting goals, which is used, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-related. I've tried to build the goals that I am proposing using that acronym, and I, and I will say it again. I firmly believe that we, as a policymaker, should be focused on the goals and all the objectives and tasks is administrative and the city manager's and staff's job to figure out what objectives and tasks need to be done to get to the goals that we set. I did also try to winnow it down, and I think I deleted one of seven to six. I'd still rather have only four max, but they are important goals, so I don't know if I can get there personally, but that's a discussion. I think the one I did away with was maintain and improve city financial sustainability. In my mind, that's a given. It has to be financially sustainable, or we don't have a city. So I don't know if that's really a stated goal. I think it's an implicit goal. So I did try to, like I say, go from seven to six. If you look closely at my markup, there were some things that I couldn't come up with. How do you measure, using the SMART acronym, how do you measure whether or not you have an effective police force? I really didn't have a good answer for that, or how much you've improved. So that's, that's a discussion point, I think, if you want to go down this path that I'm proposing, using the SMART objectives to set goals for the city as policymakers. So it, and I am not tied to any of these, but I think as a process, it brings us up to a higher level and makes the goals very specific. Now, one thing I did miss when I was marking up, I was thinking only for 2019. I think you had kind of proposed this in two years.
You have a two-year budget.
Yeah, and that's probably fair. And I didn't really, I didn't realize that until after I had done my markup, just FYI, so.
And, and to your question, there are some things we can bring forth in terms of measurement for police, and you can look at and see if you like those. There's all types of statistics, some of which I'd say, hmm, those are okay, but I, but there's a few I think you can focus in on, like crimes per thousand, clearance rates, things of those nature, and you can really see, I think, you know, really what, what's happening in the community, so.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
I really like these goals that you've laid out here for the 2019, 2020 draft goals. I appreciate Councilmember Hornish, your attempt to, to narrow them down, but I think that a couple of them got a little bit too narrow, so particularly around like improve the city's environmental health and protection. I think that from a goal perspective, it needs to be broader than just a singular item, because it's not really a goal. If we have it be focused on just one, I think you would focus that on just the, the tree canopy or the urban tree study or something. So I think that, you know, improving our environmental health and protection is the right level for a goal. There may be a particular objective that's around the urban tree canopy, but that would just be one thing. And I think for many of these goals, they are multifaceted, and I appreciate that we want to make sure that they are measurable, and I think that's great. But I think this is really very reflective of what we had before, but kind of moving it forward, so I appreciate that.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, no, I'm in a similar vein of saying that we can continue to build off of the 2019, 2020 goals. As I understood, and the city manager in your comments earlier, a lot of the task portions that you had in there is really for staff working as far as the work plan, not that the council get into those weeds, or heaven forbid that we ever should do that. And the objectives, however, do serve as a measurement for us to realize what are we meaning under it. So I like the objectives being there. So the 2019, 2020 draft goals, I like. I like having the objectives there, recognizing that tasks will be taken by staff. As far as police and trying to get an effectiveness for police, similar to defense, I mean, a lot of that goes back to the community surveys. We've been putting those out for years, and ironically, the police are usually the top of the list as far as well received. And so there are some things that you don't measure directly as much as we can do responding to the Priority X calls. There's a greater sense that comes out of those community surveys. But I like sticking with the 2019, 2020 goals as defined and recognizing that tasks are not for us, but for staff to work, the work plan and come back to us. Thank you.
And let me indicate that I do agree with Councilor Hornish that the objectives and tasks are primarily what staff is working on. Reason I reflected those, so you could get a look at those.
Exactly.
And see if there's something in there that, that you specifically wanted to see us do in relationship to that goal, and it's not there, like to be in there. Likewise, if there's things in there that you specifically don't want to see, we need to amend those as well. So it gives you a look at them, but when it, they're posted, you're just going to see the goal statements with, and if you have questions, I can always bring you up to date on the objectives and tasks.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. So I read this last week, and I read it again this week, and I'm trying to understand, I mean, I think there might be a disconnect about what the city manager's intention is and what we're reading in terms of, I think what this is, is reflective of the whiteboard and your experience here, and, you know, you've kind of taken what you've gleaned from the, how long has it been, six, eight months, whatever it's been, you know, from your experience here, kind of coming in, seeing where we're at, and hearing from all of us and hearing from staff, and essentially putting it into a one-document thing, taking your whiteboard and plugging it in. That's kind of what I reflect this as, or see this as. And I appreciate that, because it allows me to kind of see the things that I think are relevant. I mean, I think there's certain things in here that are, we're not going to improve the city's social media and outreach. We, as a staff or as a council, are not going to do that. But we should recognize whether or not, as a council, we view that as a priority. We can call it a task, we can call it a goal, we can call it whatever we want. But I think what you've done here, and the reason I appreciate it as is, isn't necessarily as a, and we talk a lot about work plans, right? This is our work plan. What are we pulling out of this and saying, you know what, we have four votes, six votes, seven votes, God forbid, right? To try to do one of these things on this list, because we all agree that it's important to do that one thing. And it falls under, you know, whatever, city communications or high performing governance or whatever it may be. I mean, to me, that's, it's kind of a 30,000-foot view plan. You know, here are the things you've, you know, taken from your experiences here and conversations with us. What do you all want to do about this? So I like it as is. I guess my question to you is, how do we then refine it down to a level where we, over the next, and talking to our, hopefully our new city manager, you know, to the more permanent person in your role, how do we take this as is now? Or do we kind of spend the next month or two months working in twos and threes and kind of pulling out where those things are, where we can find some consensus between us, and then put those as, you know, almost like a subgroup or a separate, here is our council work plan, here's this 30,000-foot document, looking down on everything. Over the course of the next 12 months, here are things we can get six votes on. Wouldn't that be something? Here, looking forward, we can put these off, and this is going to take a little bit more work, maybe a study session on these things, kind of start to taper it down, if you will, a little bit more. I think that would be preferable to me personally. There isn't anything on here that I think we should delete personally, but I would like to see a kind of a mix between what Councilmember Hornish has done in terms of really, you know, distilling it down to, you know, a half dozen things that are very specific and very pointed, and I don't disagree with those either, but what's our goal here? I guess that's what I'm, I mean, I would like some, some, hopefully some information on that.
I think the first order of business is really determine what are your overreaching goals, goals that you wish to accomplish in the next couple of years. And again, there's no pride of authorship in the way those are worded. I think they do need to be broader overreaching, because you're going to have a lot of activity underneath it.
Yeah.
As you will see in the objectives and tasks, a lot of that stuff, in fact, I'm going to say 90, 95% of it is somewhere in the pipeline making its way to you.
Yeah.
And one of the things I wanted to make sure that you got to look at is what the activities levels are, because they're very broad, and there's a lot of energy and a lot of staff work going into that. And I heard last year on a number of occasions, there was some surprise about things ending up on the council table. So I wanted to make sure that you understand, these things are kind of working their way towards you.
Yeah.
Either at some level, maybe in a committee consideration, it may be in the budget that, that you've been budgeted for, it may be some of the planning that we've talked about, there may be some specific actions that are underway, interim development regs right now.
Yeah.
Housing strategy, urban forest management plan, all of those things. Those don't have to show up on these. It's really a question, what are the goals? And then, again, is there something in there that you really want to see move forward as a priority, something in there you don't want in there?
Right.
Because you're running multiple businesses here, if you will, and each department's working on a lot of different things. They're all making their way to you to say, go forward and do, or stop here.
Can I just, I mean, I think, I agree with that, and I think in lieu of a retreat where we can actually have that kind of moment of zen where we're all together and, you know, whether it's a ropes course or something fun.
And we didn't get that this year, because it snowed.
I know, but in lieu of that, I mean, would it be something, I guess for me, it would be beneficial, if I were to say, here are the six, eight, 10 things, individual items on this list that I would like to see, as this council member, I would like to see move forward as my top priority. Here's a half dozen more things that I'd like to see some more commitment of staff time on, and here's a list of things that I don't think we're just, we're just not going to be able to get to in the near future. If that kind of narrow it down, and then maybe if the seven of us can sit down with our own list of 10, and then maybe at our next meeting or whatever that number is, you know, and say, hey, you know what, there are six or seven of us that have the same three or four items on here. I think that would be a really good use of where this project, or this list could go as a next step. It just concerns me that, where do we go from here? That's what I'm trying to suss out.
And just say, those would be helpful to know. I mean, there's really, what is in there that you don't want in there?
Right.
What is in there that really is important to each one of you? There are some things in there that have to come to you because they're statutorily required.
Shoreline Master Plan, we've got to do your budget, the audit, those sorts of things.
Staff time is going to go that, a lot of the stuff, it's underway, still going to come to you, but it may not be the highest priority on your list. If there's something in there you really want to do, we definitely want to try to make sure that rises to the top and gets to you at the earliest possible date. But again, 90, 95% of the stuff is there's work being directed to right now in some form or fashion.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
I think Councilmember Ritchie read my mind. I was thinking very similar, the way you described it. Start with Tom Hornish's high-level goals, and then you kind of have a matrix, year one, year two, and within each year, you have must-do, then the next tier of priorities, and then the bottom priorities. If you could matrix-y that in a very simple matrix, I think that would really take this all into a very executable plan.
See if we can do that for you.
Good. Chris, are you good? Are you done? Okay, just want to make sure. So I guess the part that troubles me about all the objectives and tasks that are under there is that these are council goals, and a lot of what's under here isn't anything we have anything to do with. You know, process the UZDP application. Well, that's totally staff. It's administrative, it's not policy. And I think that's where Councilmember Hornish was going, was that, you know, what's actionable by council specifically? I guess I would feel more comfortable with these being dubbed, you know, council goals if, you know, if they're, you know, parsed out between, you know, what's really our role? I think, you know, we have a tendency to get muddled into the administrative stuff, and this is probably why. It's sitting under council goals. If you want to, you know, if you want to keep us separate, then I think you need to divide, you know, what, where council's role is in terms of these goals and then executing them versus what staff's role is, because we're not doing anything with the UZDP, community development is.
We, I think what Council Ross is talking about, which we can illustrate those both in terms of kind of the tiers of high, medium, and low, as well as which ones are on the council's plate, which ones are more staff activity. The one thing I think this does do as a document right here, it does indicate the body of work that is underway. work that is underway. So when, and one reason I do that is so when the council, when seven of you, which are very active, keep coming up with ideas, it's sooner or later, I have to say, okay, the plate is full. What do you wish to take off if we're going to add that to the list?
Yes.
And I just, it gives you a good reference at, you know, kind of what all is in your budget, what's being worked on, and kind of keeps us all mindful that you only have so many bodies. Now, you can always add more to it if you add funding and staff, but I know you don't want to do that either, so we want to balance that best we can.
I do like Councilmember Hornish's additions on goal two. He added in a little bit of language, which was propose reasonable and specific code amendments to enhance community livability, and then he added in the term neighborhood character. And I do like that addition to it as well, because I think that's a lot of what the work that we're doing anyway, and I think to pull that up to the surface and recognize that a lot of what we're doing, like are the interim development regulations, right, that has a lot to do with neighborhood character. So I do like that additional language in there. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, if we wanted to pare this list of seven that you give us down to six, I would argue that expanding the city's economy isn't necessarily a specific goal. I think that that falls under goal six, and while I appreciate Councilmember Hornish's concept that it's just a given, I think unless you write it down and you measure it, then it doesn't necessarily happen. So I would like to see us have a goal that says, you know, we're going to maintain and improve the city's financial stability. Maybe we call it sustainability as opposed to just stability, and that part of that is, you know, one of the objectives that may be under there would be developing an economic development plan, and that would be something that you may bring back to council as one of your sort of work items that comes back. So I could see us definitely pairing this down to having six goals, which may be an easier number to handle. So maybe, maybe there is a, you know, I like the idea of the overarching goals as opposed to these goals getting super specific, because I think that the goals are overarching, the objectives and tasks that you come up with as staff that you bring back and say, hey, here are the things that we're going to work on to achieve these goals, are the things that need to be the smart, the smart things that we can measure. I think that, I mean, I think we do need measurable things for the goals to say, how are we going to do that? But I still think they need to be overarching. I just, maybe the one I'm having the most heartburn with, again, is pairing the environment down to only having it being an urban forestry management plan. I think that, I think that our environmental health and protection is way more than simply an urban forestry management plan. I think that the urban forestry management plan, in my mind, falls under one of the objectives, but not as a goal as a whole, so.
Councilmember Hornish.
I would ask each of the council members to try to specify how these goals that is proposed meet the SMART, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, time-related. They don't have any of that in there. Maintain, and I'll use goal six as an example, maintain and improve city's financial stability. Nothing specific, nothing measurable, no time-related. It's not, hopefully, it's achievable, and hopefully, it's realistic, but it doesn't set a goal. And I think the city manager just said, you can't do everything all the time at the same time. You have to prioritize, and that's what goal-setting is. It's not that we want to do everything for this city in the best way we can forever and ever. That's not setting goals. That's a mission statement that this is where we want to go, but that doesn't move you forward to get to the next step. So again, I would ask you, how is this meeting specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-related to set goals for us as council versus what staff needs to be doing to meet the goals that we set?
I don't have any more lights on.
Okay, let me take these, and I'll see if I can't answer some of those questions put together, and I'll bring it back to you in another work session, and keep doing so until you get to the point that you're comfortable with it. That is up through April.
Let's put it on for May, then. Okay, that's all we have for this evening, unless anybody has anything else. All right, we're adjourned.